Good evening, everyone. This is the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, to be held June 21st, 2022 at 6:00 PM at the council chambers. Let's have our deputy clerk please take the role.
Councilmember Henry?
Here.
Councilmember Holes?
Here.
Councilmember Carratt?
Present.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Weldon?
Here.
Vice Mayor Narin?
Here.
And Mayor Olensky?
Here, thank you. Okay, please stand to join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next is the brief summary of current events by the mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during the summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Do we have any council members with anything this evening? No? All right. Take it away, Mr. Corbin.
I just have one update, Mr. Mayor, council. The pavement preservation is ongoing, but the good news is the striping of our streets will start Sunday night, and it'll be night operation, so you'll begin to see all of our streets return to normal here very shortly, but very excited about this process coming to an end.
Good, great. All right, well, let's move in to call to the public then, and this portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action, and comments are limited to a three-minute time period. We just have one gentleman this evening to address us. If there's anyone else out there that would like to address us, there's yellow forms in the back here. More than welcome to fill them out, and let's get Mr. Jim Padgett up here, please. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Olensky and council. Yes, it's almost here. Seventeen calendar days, twelve working days, three Fridays, two paydays, and one Monday, and I'll be gone. But I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunities I've had. It's been nine years, mostly good. If I had five minutes, I could talk about Scott, but I only have three, and he probably wouldn't like that anyways. But no, I just wanted to say thank you and come up here for this council, the members on the council before you were here for tolerating as I stumbled through a presentation, and... But thank you. It is on to greener pastures, and I'll be leaving the area. I look forward when I do come back to seeing the good things that have transpired here. I look forward to seeing the new assistant director of planning, the new building inspectors, and... Am I saying this right? Okay, okay, you know. But thank you. This will be the last opportunity I have, and so I just wanted to take this moment to say goodbye and thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks to the staff members that are mostly staff here this evening, but thank you all in the workings that we've had.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You'll be missed, thank you. All right, if there's no one else, then we'll close the floor to the public and move on to the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of June 7th, 2022, and the work session of June 14th, 2022. And I'll motion to approve those minutes. Okay, mayor made the motion, councilmember Carratt seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, they're approved. And unfinished business, so we have two items under unfinished business this evening. First up is ordinance number 710, amending section 2.11.040.D of the municipal code relating to the attendance requirements for members of the city's historic preservation commission. This is the second and final reading. I think we've gone over this a few times now. Any other additional comments or anything from council? Anyone from the public who'd like to address us on this issue? Okay, I'll go ahead and motion then to approve ordinance number 710.
Second.
Okay, mayor made the motion, councilmember Holes seconded it. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Holes?
Yes.
Councilmember Carratt?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Weldon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Narin?
Yes.
And Mayor Olensky?
Yes. All right. Let's have our deputy clerk please read ordinance number 710 by title only.
Ordinance number 710, an ordinance of the mayor and the city council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, amending section 2.110.040.D of the municipal code relating to the attendance requirements for members of the city's historic preservation commission.
All right, thank you. And next is ordinance number 713, amending section 304, design review of the city zoning ordinance. This is again the second and final reading. Counsel, any additional comments, concerns? Anyone from the public like to address us on this issue? Okay. I'll motion again then to approve ordinance number 713.
Second.
Okay, mayor made the motion, councilmember Weldon seconded it. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Holes?
Yes.
Councilmember Carratt?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Weldon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Narin?
Yes.
And Mayor Olensky?
Yes. All right, let's have you again read ordinance number 713 by title only.
Ordinance number 713, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the zoning ordinance by amending section 304, design review.
Okay, thanks. All right, moving right along, we're going to roll into the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine and non-conservative by council, and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda. We have just three items this evening. First up is extension of lease for the Old Town Jail building with Sandy Brown doing business as seeds and natural firewood clothing. Item two is resolution number 3139, approving an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Glendale for use of their new tax application and dashboard. And item three, award of bid and approval of contract with Meltin &amp; Sons LLC for custodial services at city facilities. Any item that council or a citizen would like to have pulled? All right, I'll motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, mayor made the motion, vice mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, it's approved. Okay, new business. The following items are for council discussion, consideration, and possible legal action. First up is the public hearing regarding the city's tentative budget for fiscal year 2223. Good evening.
Good evening, mayor and council. I am Kirsten Lennon, the financial services director. This portion of the meeting is set aside for a public hearing. It's part of our requirements for adopting the tentative budget, so we will open the floor to any public who'd like to speak on the fiscal year 23 budget.
Okay, are there any members of the public this evening that would like to speak on this item? I think most are here for other business. All right. All right, we'll close the floor. And just to let folks know, we have done much public outreach and a bigger discussion about the budget, so there's, you know, if you missed it then, don't worry, there's going to be more opportunities.
Mr. Mayor, we actually still have about two or three more meetings with different groups and civic organizations, so our last one was with Crestview HOA. Great turnout, almost a dozen, I would say. Rudy and Kirsten and myself attended. It was over an hour, lots of questions. It was great participation.
Good.
And we will have the final adoption of the budget?
Sure.
Next month as well.
Yep, all right. Okay, and then we'll go and close the floor to the public and open up item two, which is adoption of the city's tentative budget for fiscal year 2223 and setting an expenditure limitation.
Good evening, mayor and council. We've gone over the proposed budget, and there have been some small changes since the proposed to the tentative. They're listed in your packet. One of the main ones was that we increased the urban revenue share to what the state estimate was, which increased our revenues. Those changes of revenue were $733,225 in total. And then we had some expenditure changes, moving some items from fiscal year 23 back to fiscal year 22 that we will complete in this year, and then also carrying over some items that we will not complete in fiscal year 22 to fiscal year 23. We will have some small changes for the final budget as well. We have, the custodial agreement came in higher than we anticipated, which you're going to talk about later, or saw in the packet, and that will increase our budget slightly, which will basically not increase the total expenditures because we will just reduce the undesignated reserves. Same thing with a program that I am looking at for capital, to do capital planning and for budget purposes. It's a really nice program. If you're interested in seeing it, I can send you the link where they have them on other people's websites. But it's a pretty high expense. It's about $80,000 in the first year for that program. It also has a procurement software that I'm hoping will help with procurement and being able to do bids online and for people to submit their bids online and just keep some good tracking. The AWAS, which was initially thought would be carried over to fiscal year 23, actually is completed as of right now, and so that got put back into fiscal year 22. And there was some grant funding that didn't get put into the fiscal year 22 that I forgot about that got added, so those decreased the indirect costing. Some other items that we discussed previously were the 11 new full-time equivalent staff that are being added for reclassifications that are being added, and then the merit and COLA program, and then obviously the capital was budgeted at about $58 million, which we discussed for the proposed. Nothing changed in that besides moving the AWAS back to last year. And then all the other information that is in the communication, pretty much everything else stayed the same. So if you have any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to add on the salaries. So just so you know, we included compensation for all of the contract employees except for myself to be effective July 1 with the rest of the employees. So whatever they would fit into the merit, we've budgeted that unless we receive different direction, and of course I'll negotiate November, October, whenever that comes up for mine. But all of the other appointed officials would be effective July 1 with whatever eligible increases they're eligible for based on tenure.
And then also Ron wanted to make sure that you were aware of our cash balances currently. In the past, we've given you a slide in the proposed budget and other presentations where we showed our cash balances, and the slide that's up on the screen right now wasn't in your packet because I just finished it. And what it's basically showing is a comparison for March of 2022, comparing it to March of 2020. And as you can see, we have about $24 million more in the bank as cash currently than we did two years ago, which was one of your strategic goals, was to make sure that our reserves were higher and that we were saving funds and that we had enough funds to cover anything that would occur.
Excellent, excellent. All right. Counsel, any questions at all for?
Just like we continue to put those in different banks, is that correct? With maybe possible interest?
Yes, yes. We moved, they're actually in several different banks, including one local bank, so... Small, it's growing. As interest rates grow up, it is growing.
All right. Well, we've certainly gone over this at great length, and I don't see any major changes in front of us now, so... Counsel, any discussion at all, comments?
And I have a printout of this if you guys want it.
Okay. Okay. All right. Would anyone care to make a motion?
Sure. Get back to it down here, up here. I move to adopt the city's proposed fiscal year 2023 tentative budget as presented and to establish the city's fiscal year 2023 tentative expenditure limitation at $139,448,795.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, councilmember Matthews made the motion, councilmember Weldon seconded it. Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Holes?
Yes.
Councilmember Carratt?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Weldon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Narin?
Yes.
And Mayor Olensky?
Yes. All right, motion passes, thank you. Okay, let's go into item three then. This is consideration of possible approval of a proposed agreement with Arizona Aviation LLC to provide fixed base operator services at the Cottonwood Airport evening.
Evening, mayor and council. Jeff Tripp, airport manager. As you're aware, the city's previous fixed base operator, Wiseman Aviation, ceased operations in August of 2021. The city has been providing limited fuel service with our aviation, hunter low lead fuel for piston engine aircraft. We have not been providing jet services. In November, the city issued requests for proposals for another FBO operator. We did receive two proposals, and after the review created of myself, city manager Ron Corbin, and contracted purchasing administrator Jeff Cook reviewed, we determined that Arizona Aviation was the entity we wanted to move forward with. I've been conducting negotiations with them since that time. We're now ready to move forward to recommend award of contract Arizona Aviation. Some of the key agreements for the terms and conditions, try to negotiate down to reduce some of the workload that the previous FBO had, also try to reduce some of the operating costs of paying upfront so that we give the new entity time to establish operations, hopefully achieve reasonable financial sustainability so that we have them here working through the full five-year term of their contract, we don't have to go back out again for an FBO in the near future. Some of the key terms, we're providing jet fuel, which is a critical need for the airport. We'll be providing aviation maintenance services, another thing that we do not technically have at the airport right now. They'll continue to do basic airfield inspections and general maintenance with the city doing some of the more detailed maintenance such as mowing and weed spraying. And then for the first 24 months of the contract, we're looking at a reduced rate, and then getting to year three, we'll then bump up the rates and fees somewhat, assuming that they will be able to maintain operations. The contract again will be for five years with the option to extend at the end of that five-year period. We do have the owner Brad Toulon here. If the council has any questions that they would like to ask of him at this time, or myself.
Great. Any questions for staff or Mr. Tripp?
I'm just curious, what happens if you are unable, in your case, to provide the services? Meaning the pavement or anything like that on the strip?
Yes, we're not going to be maintaining the actual airport property when we talk about maintenance. It'll be aircraft maintenance and services related directly to the aircraft.
Okay.
Yeah, council, I'll clarify further. I mean, they're doing some general maintenance, you know, picking up trash, some general inspection, but when it gets into things like pavement maintenance or building maintenance, those will be contracted out, usually through public works or third-party contractors, depending upon what type of work is needed.
Great. All right, let's give Mr. Toulon an opportunity to introduce himself. Good evening.
Mayor, council. Brad Toulon, born and raised in Sedona. I'm in the Verde Valley my whole life, so went to school down here and excited to start another business. I do have an FBO service in Sedona right now with mechanics, full-time mechanics, and we don't provide fueling up there. The airport does that themselves, but that'll be an added service that we'll do down here. And if you want to know more about me, I got lots of stories, so I won't take your time, though. Any questions directed at me?
If you're born and raised in Sedona, you definitely have lots of stories.
Yeah, right, exactly. Yep, graduated Mengus, it was cool.
Any questions for Mr. Toulon?
I didn't have questions, but a comment whenever it's appropriate.
Sure, go ahead.
So again, no questions, but after reviewing the materials and the contract, I did just want to say I'm really looking forward to this proposed, you know, the services moving forward. It'd be really good to have the stability at the airport. The scope of work, although somewhat reduced from in the past, looks reasonable, and so does the cost. And especially glad to have somebody with those local roots and investment in the community. So personally, I'd like to thank the committee, staff, and then also excited to see Arizona, you know, as you're moving forward at the airport, so...
I second that.
Certainly, we've heard good things about your operations in Sedona, so we're happy to have you. Yeah. All right, I would be ready for a motion if anyone is so inclined.
I got it. I move to approve the proposed agreement with Arizona Aviation LLC to provide fixed base operator services at the Cottonwood Airport.
Second.
Okay, vice mayor made the motion and councilmember Narin seconded it. Roll call vote, please. I'm sorry? Vice mayor made the motion and Narin seconded it. Did I get that right?
Ms. Carratt seconded it.
What did I say? I said it twice, whatever I said, okay.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Holes?
Yes.
Councilmember Carratt?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Weldon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Narin?
Yes.
And Mayor Olensky?
Yes. All right, at least I'm consistent, right? All right, next up is item four, is a proposed funding agreement with the Cottonwood Chamber of Commerce for fiscal year 2223.
Good evening, Mayor Olensky, members of the council. I'm Tricia Lewis, tourism economic development for the city. And as you know, for the past two and a half years, I have been working pretty closely. That was one of my jobs and duties initially was to work with the chamber and make that relationship. It was somewhat of a new role, as you all know, and there was some, you know, hurdles we went through, but they were all good. And I'm here tonight as I just wanted to say that we've worked really closely together. There is a great partnership, and I know, and I hope you all know, that there is great synergy with the Chamber of Commerce and the city, and I hear it in the community. I see it at the mixers that they go to, that they host, and we've been working together. Let Christian do his, you know, update, but I just want to say that, you know, his new staff that he has and our staff, Laura and I meet with them every other week. We discuss marketing, we talk about how we're going to collaborate on, you know, events coming up, and it's just a really, it's a seamless, you know, effort. And I just, I feel like it just renewed almost the chamber initially and the chamber with the city and that partnership. So I'm just really, I'm pleased to be here tonight and ask Christian to give you all an update of the things that they've accomplished in, you know, discussion with the renewal of their agreement for fiscal 23. So Christian, if you want to come up and do your presentation, does anyone have any questions for me before I hand it over to him?
Any questions for Ms. Lewis? No, okay, thank you.
Thanks, Christian?
Good evening. Thank you, council. What a wild, crazy couple of years we've had, right? Been very interesting, and like Trish said, we've come a very long way. The partnership between the city and the chamber is stronger than it's ever been. It's been amazing to meet every other Tuesday with Trish and Laura and just find out what's going on with the city. She's finding out what's going on with us. It's been a great collaboration and very excited to show you some of the things that we've accomplished over the last year and where we're heading for the next couple of years. So, yeah. So where we left you all was November of '21. We had partnered with Local First to do some focus groups with our businesses locally and Verde Valley wide. We did cottage groups, home-based businesses, women-owned, Hispanic-owned, and 74 of the in-person with the SBDC was really informational and helped us quite a bit in moving forward with our plan. Where we left our focus groups, the businesses, we asked them, you know, what are your plans for the next 12 months? And this is what they answered. Really not wanting to lose any ground moving forward, providing consistent service. Employees, workforce tends to be an issue, and a lot of them are gearing up to retire, surprisingly enough. So the whole idea there is, again, hopefully we have some long-term employees that have been with that business. Verdi Lee is a perfect example of that. We, he was engaged in some of our focus groups, and we were able to share with him revolving loan fund with BB Rio, and he's got an employee that's been with him for 20 years, and he's looking to potentially take that business over. Bill wants to retire, so good stuff. Chamber, we really focused on this information and came together with Local First and built our strategic plan moving forward. So first off, obviously, our mission. One of the focus groups, it was pretty interesting, a close friend of mine, one of the comments made was, you know, the chamber needs to focus on commerce. It's in our name, pretty simple, right? So we would love to be that voice of commerce in the area. We've always been a champion of the community. We support the community, as you all do, and really happy to be doing these things. Our three focus areas, commerce, obviously, culture, and community. So I'm not going to go into a whole lot of detail, it's pretty long, but I have supplied you all with our strategic plan from Local First, and these are the key highlights, obviously building capacity. What we found is that a lot of our businesses are so focused on working in their business that they can't necessarily focus on their business, and that's a challenge. So we have been finding ways that we can help to support them, and one of the many ways that we've done it is through our website. We have a lot of micro sites, which you'll be seeing here in just a minute. Gold Two was cultivating an inclusive collaborative business community. So part of our focus groups was a Hispanic focus group. We were able to go out and meet with 50-plus businesses here locally in Cottonwood, and been building that trust, building that relationship, and inviting them to some more of our focus groups and/or finding out ways that we can help support that underserved community. We're hoping that eventually we can do like Dia de los Muertos type of an event, cultural event, to bring everybody out, so more to come on that. And then enhancing the value and the impact of the chamber. Again, we've had a rough couple of years, and I think the chamber has really taken the last couple of years to refocus, regroup, and go back to our roots. And really pleased to see that our membership has really stepped up as well and have been communicating with us. communicating with us. We kind of had a loss there. We dropped down, we were up over 500-plus members, and at the beginning of the year, we started with 379. So we lost a few, but we were able to recover at least 35 of those businesses that were kind of not sure what they were doing next. So we were able to bring them back in and work with them. One of the first areas we started on and focusing on was our brand. We are a regional chamber. Even though we are based in Cottonwood, we do have members throughout the entire Verde Valley. The majority of our members are based here, roughly 300-plus businesses in the Cottonwood area. But we represent businesses throughout the Verde Valley, and it was important for us to express that, the way we felt that reached that was with the Greater Cottonwood Chamber of Commerce. So we changed the name, changed the logo, changed the brand, and have been attacking that. In building that brand, there's a lot of things that the community and businesses' members don't know that the chamber does behind the scenes. And we're working better at getting that information out. We do need to share it more. There's a lot of advocacy that goes on at the state level. We have 50-plus chambers in the state of Arizona, and we're members of the ACE, is the Arizona Chamber Execs. And we come up with a legislative agenda that we present to the state every year. Networking opportunities, right? We've got, our mixers have been coming back very strong, our breakfast meetings. And promotion, obviously, we promote our members. One thing we also discovered during this timeframe is that a lot of our locals didn't really realize as well what kind of information we have in the visitor center. So we've really been pushing that, that it's not just a visitor center, it's a visitor information center. And there's a lot of great things there for locals to come in, so we've been building So as you can see, commerce, culture, and community. So we started out with 379 members, and since January, we've raised that by 26. We're at 403 right now. And the majority of those are new businesses, a few of them have been established, businesses coming back. But 26 new members is really pretty amazing for us. I don't think we've ever hit maybe 15 tops in a year. So this is since January. And I would credit most of that to our new membership services person, Gianna. She's been amazing. She'd go get her, out there shaking hands, meeting people, and really pushing the good work that the chamber does behind the scenes. Our visitor counts, so again, in working with Trish and really trying to bump up our advertising that we're doing, is mimicking what the city's doing, plus they help us with a lot of the ads that we will put out in print magazines and whatnot as well. So in 2020, we had 47 visitors to the visitor center. And this past May, as you can see, we're up over 900-plus, 1,100 between the two visitor centers. So track has been kind of weird over the last couple of years. We've been seeing, usually our slow season is now the hot season to come and visit. That is now, seems like it's finally going back to the regular cycle. Things are starting to slow down, it's too hot, people are backing off a little bit. So we're seeing some of those numbers going off over through July and probably into August. But you can see that our new website, still the same URL, cottonwoodchamberaz.org, but a whole brand-new website with a new database and member directory. So our capacity building, as you can see, some of the lower ones, they have logos. Some of our basic listings, you're still listed as a chamber member and you have contact information. But we've also switched to a tier due structure, so our bottom tier gets a microsite that's built out, and I'll be happy to share that with you here pretty quickly. Another thing we were doing is, so in building capacity and also reaching out to community, we brought back our chamber breakfasts. Our next one is the 30th, so I think Ron and Rudy and Kirsten will be presenting there, so we're going to be doing the budget talk. And we're going to be bringing those back quarterly with a speaker series. Our mixers have been pretty phenomenal lately, pretty exciting. At least 50 people showing up and everybody networking and having a really good time, so been working out. We began a job board. So through the website as well, they have a link that they can go to. Our members can post job openings, as well as the city. So right now, most jobs that are listed on there are actually the city of Cottonwood and Clarkdale, so it's kind of a neat, neat thing, and I would hope that you would go check it out. We've also been building our social media presence, again, trying to build and help those entrepreneurs with their capacity. They don't have the time to be doing a lot of these social media posts. And as you can see, our numbers have been skyrocketing. So 5,913 people reaching in that last, through May 19th. And I've got some other numbers coming up here that were pretty impressive. Bottom number, page likes, is up 433%. So we've got a schedule going now and a routine, and we finally have the vibe going, so I think we've got it down. Again, a lot of these ads for our members and the mixers. We've been opening that up so that all of our attendees actually get a chance to introduce themselves, tell us about their business, and that's really been successful, and people like it. So, again, some of the hits, we are expanded into Instagram now, which is how you want to reach the younger market. We discovered that we kept having older generation coming to our events, and as soon as we started posting to Instagram, we instantly started getting those 20- to 30-year-olds that were coming and attending things. So Instagram is for the younger group, Facebook is for the older group. But as you can see, Instagram, we've had a 319% increase there in our Instagram reach. This is our marketplace. So again, our key sponsors are listed there. This is a mobile version of our website, so members can come up, or anybody can come up and scan that QR code, it'll take them right to a mobile version of our website. And then what they will see is, as you can see, the city has a microsite there on the left, gives you your general information about the city. And then they can, the visitor to the site can toss you stars, they can, you know, refer you as a business that they've done business with. They can go directly to your website from there. They can also then view your catalog, which is the second page that pops up. And so all of your services are listed there, and those are all hot links to individual pages within your website as well. So every one of our lowest-tiered members comes in, gets a microsite built out like that for them. And again, a lot of the advertising that we've been doing with a lot of the great help from Laura and Trish, these ads are amazing. We've been doing some in Essential Magazine, Sedona International Film Festival. Because we're a nonprofit, we got some pretty good rates with them. We're not only in their magazine, but we're also on the screen, the ads that are going up on there, so getting some good exposure that way. And then our community events and supporting the community. We get flyers monthly, and we try to not make our newsletter so big and bulky, but we get a lot of different events, community events. Obviously, the Old Town Entertainment Guide is hot. Music with the city and the farmer's market is always a great draw. And just recently, we combined forces and got this wonderful Verde Valley map on the site of our visitor center. And as I was sitting out here waiting tonight, you could just see people walking up and taking pictures of it and looking at it and checking it out, planning their day. So it's really been a neat thing to bring to Old Town. I would like to put some sort of mural on the other side of that, so I'm still working on that one, Ron. Maybe we can get some input. So I wanted to thank my board over the last two years, they're all listed here. I want to take a special moment to thank Jackie Bessler, who's been by my side for the last two years. I don't think that I could have done it without him. And I'm blessed to be having Darla DeVillas coming in as my board chair for the next two years. So we have a lot of exciting things happening, coming forward for you, and I'm hoping to be able to do this again with you. We do have a, our annual dinner is the 25th. Would love for any of you to come. We still have some spots available, so if you can make it, it'd be great. It's going to be a speakeasy, so we're doing the Rory 20s, and we hope you'll dress up, come see us. And that's all they have.
Awesome, thank you. Any questions for Christian and council?
Comment?
Comment, go ahead, please.
So I think, considering where it's coming from, you'll appreciate the gravity of this. It's quite an impressive presentation. You've come a long way in a couple of years.
We sure have.
And it looks really good.
Thank you.
Really impressive, so it's a great job, keep it up, thank you for what you're doing.
Appreciate it.
And coming from a chamber background, it's a lot of hard work, and you've done a great job, so thank you.
I know you're supported by a couple of members of your board, I don't know if they care to speak to council, no? Okay, all right.
You did great. Aloha?
Aloha.
Mr. Mayor, I was getting ready to comment for the record.
Well, good evening and aloha, honorable mayor and city council. We just want to thank all of you for your support. It takes a city to build a city. It takes a city to enhance a community. And working together is really what it's all about. And over the last couple of years, we've seen a great deal of partnership and collaboration. Want to thank the city manager, Ron, you've been terrific, of course, Trish and your team, thank you so much. And all of the board members from the Cottonwood Chamber. We've worked really hard over the last couple of years to get us to this point. And certainly, Christian, he's done a tremendous job, learned lots of lessons on this path, but done a wonderful job. But it takes us all. So just thank you so much, and that is aloha.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yeah, I really do appreciate the collaboration, too, and it's clear there's been a lot of just strong effort from both parts, and it's, we see it paying off right now.
It's been great, yeah, it really has.
Yep, so keep up the good work.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
Need a motion?
We do.
Well, let's just do that. I move to approve the proposed fiscal year 2023 funding agreement with the Cottonwood Chamber of Commerce, the greater Cottonwood.
Second.
Okay, I'll get it correct this time. Councilmember Wilden made the motion, Councilmember Karat seconded it. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Holes?
Yes.
Councilmember Karat?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilden?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Narin?
Yes.
And Mayor Olensky?
Yes.
And motion carries.
All right, very good, thank you. Okay, next is item five, discussion, consideration, possible legal action to authorize staff to negotiate and the mayor to execute agreements with the Fane Signature Group and other parties to facilitate the construction of the remaining portion of Grosseto Ranch Road from State Route 89A to North Main Street. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Scott Ellis, Community Development Director. Just a quick, few slides to kind of go over this. As you know, the vineyards at Cottonwood has been in place for a few years now. We've had some delays on getting it through. City was approached by the Fanes, and they proposed to construct the remainder of Grosseto Ranch Road from 89A to North Main Street, just outside of Old Town. They proposed to start that no later than October and complete it no later than April 30th of next year, next spring. They've asked the city to contribute up to $450,000. That would be a max. We're still waiting to see what that final bid comes in at before knowing what that final number is. But either way, it wouldn't be over $450,000. The vineyards at Cottonwood, the original developer would also contribute a portion to it, and upon the completion, we'll have that road that gets you from Main Street to 89A, kind of bypassing having to go through all of Main Street and Old Town. This is kind of a little rendering of where the alignment is. It's not 100% what you see on here, it's going to come up here a little bit. The vineyards, current phases are in here, as you'll see coming up in a few minutes. I see a road there. And that's what it looks like, this image is a few years old, but it is completed a little bit further than what you see here, but essentially taking it up through here and connecting, making that connection to Main Street. So the agreement is not 100% done yet. We're still working with the Fanes on fine-tuning it, the details of it, and we're just here to get council's permission to move that forward.
Mr. Mayor, the only thing I'll add is that this has been agendized for executive session. If there are things that council wished to ask city attorney or staff in private, but I also believe most of the parties are present.
All right. I know we went over this at great length before. Council, do you have any questions right now for staff? Yeah?
The motion says contribution from the city up to $450,000. I think you indicated that it was going to be over $450,000.
No, it'll be maxed out at $450,000, yes.
It sounded like the final bids hadn't been coming in.
And that it might be a little bit more.
No, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Matthews, sorry. The bids haven't come in, so that number could be less than $450,000, depending on what that bid number is, but it won't exceed that.
So, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Matthews, to also clarify, the agreement is being written that anything less than the original, we would split that with the Fanes. So instead of 450, it would be reduced, less than that, that's our max amount. And based on the information we have now, we hope it to be less than the 450.
Okay.
So like a 50/50, is that what you're talking about? Any savings would be 50/50.
Is that clear for everyone? Yeah, okay. I don't think there's been any real material changes since last we discussed this, correct?
Mr. Mayor, it's a complicated project. It's a set of complicated transactions, and there has to be financing secured behind it to contribute to the amount that's going to be about, maybe even more than half the expense of completing the road. So the reason it's such a complicated motion is because there's, we wanted to make full disclosure, and we want to know that we have the proper authority to get everything done in order to let them proceed.
Okay. Go ahead.
Question, have we finalized the scope of the roadwork? Is it what was previously presented and approved several years ago, or has that scope changed, and are we being asked to change that as well?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, yeah, we're satisfied with the road. We haven't approved a final plan yet, unless that's changed while I was out. But we have seen, you know, the final draft, we're on board, we believe the engineer will be able to make the adjustments that Mr. Bramble asked for, our senior engineer, but we're satisfied with the road construction, or will be before we move forward. Part of the October 1st deadline is us approving the final plans, having the money in escrow, and all of those things. So this allows us to move forward, but we're happy with where the road's going to be.
If I might, Mr. Mayor, and to Councilmember Henry's question, I think the original, if we're going all the way back to the original proposal, there were going to be, I believe, six-foot sidewalks on both sides of the street. There is now going to be, I believe, James and I talked about this last week, a 10-foot multi-use path on one side of the street. So there's a cost savings there, but it is a different arrangement than council originally saw.
And what is the surface of the multi-use path? Is that pavement or dirt or?
Concrete. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, concrete.
Go ahead. Okay.
I like the long ones.
Say again?
We do, thank you for the reminder.
Anything, any other questions from council? Okay, we do have one gentleman, Mr. Grosseto, who would like to speak on this item. You've got the podium, sir.
My name is Andrew Grosseto, 625 South Mountain Mingus Road, Cottonwood. Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I just want to share with you, we've been a part of this exercise for quite a while, and I just want to come to you and thank you for your support stepping up and helping see the fruition of Grosseto Ranch Road. It's for a couple of projects now, it was originally under the Grosseto Ranch Master Plan. As you know, we had the vineyards at Cottonwood come in now, now we have the Fane Signature Group. And between both of those entities and the city, I really believe that we're going to see that road put through like it should be and what was presented to you here about four years ago. So I come here and support, really, all three items, five, six, and seven, and appreciate the city standing up and working with both of these entities to make the road really come a reality. So thank you.
Great, thank you, sir. All right, any other discussion from council? I'll just say, I know we've gone over this... I'll just say, I know we've gone over this before, but I think it is a great opportunity that we should seize upon in order to get this road completed. It's much needed in our community and as growth occurs, as we know it is, this is going to provide a much needed relief valve to getting in and out of Old Town and just general circulation throughout the city. So I am in support.
I do have one quick question.
Go ahead.
Just to clarify, for me. It says, the staff are negotiating, the mayor to execute. What exactly does that mean?
I can speak to, since that's my creation. We wanted to, since we're not going to meet again for another month in a regular meeting, we didn't want a need, unless council directs, to come back to council. And so staff can do the negotiating, but agreements like this, the mayor is the chief executive of the city, would be the signatory. So the staff would be negotiating, the mayor would be signing.
All right. I'm ready for a motion, yes.
I move to, number one, authorize staff to negotiate and the mayor to execute on the city's behalf one or more agreements or amendments to existing agreements with the Fane Signature Group and other parties to facilitate the completion of the Grosseto Ranch Road extension to include a city contribution of up to $450,000 upon completion acceptance of the road by the city. And two, to authorize the mayor and staff to approve an assignment and allocation of certain development rights and responsibilities between the Fane Signature Group and the developers of the Vineyards at Cottonwood subdivision. And three, to authorize the mayor and staff to take other necessary and appropriate actions to facilitate the completion of the Grosseto Ranch Road extension.
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Matthews made the motion and Councilmember Holt seconded it. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrot?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Narin?
Yes.
And Mayor Linsky?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, very good. That's a big step forward. Thanks, everyone, for your flexibility as we work through all these agreements. And I know Mr. Horton loves to move at the speed of Mach 5, but thank you really for being willing to do that. All right. Next is item six, consideration, possible approval of a new letter agreement with the Vineyards at Cottonwood LLC and Granite Mountain Asset Management LLC regarding the Vineyards at Cottonwood Residential Subdivision.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. This is another item related to what we just talked about. This is the letter agreement with the Vineyards at Cottonwood to get that road completed as well. Back in January of 2021, we entered into a letter agreement with the Vineyards to get the road completed by December of 2023 or the 100th building permit. Now, as you saw, that date is changing. We're just revising that January 2021 letter with this new one, putting in the new dates. The 100th building permit is still in place as well. If the roads, if they go to get their 100th building permit before the road, it will not be issued.
Okay. Questions, council? Mr. Grosseto, I know you filled out a form for this item as well. Did you have anything else to add? You're good, okay. All right. Yes, please.
I move to approve the proposed new letter agreement with the Vineyards at Cottonwood 1 LLC and Granite Mountain Asset Management LLC, subject to approval of the final form of the letter by the city attorney.
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Wildin made the motion and Vice Mayor seconded it. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Councilmember Carratt?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Narin?
Yes.
And Mayor Linsky?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Great. All right, next, consideration, possible approval of the proposed final plat for Phase 3 of Vineyards at Cottonwood Subdivision.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. This is Phase 3 of the Vineyards' final plat. It is related to the two previous items. A little bit of background on the process. So we do look at it at staff level. They give us the complete plans. We have up to 20 working days to look at it. Can take longer if needed, but this is pretty straightforward. Final plat, not that different than Phase 2. The preliminary plat was approved by the Planning Zoning Commission and also city council. It is valid for 24 months. The final plat does not go to city council. It does come, or I'm sorry, to Planning Zoning Commission. It does come straight to city council. If city council approves it, it can then be signed and recorded. As I mentioned, the preliminary plat was approved. City council did it in September of 2021, so not quite a year ago. Twenty-nine lots in Phase 3. If you add up the first, second, and what would become the third phase, it's going to be a total of 91 lots. So as I mentioned in a previous item, that 100th building permit wouldn't come until Phase 4 even. And obviously, this is just Phase 3. It'll be located just east of Phase 2 on that larger parcel there. Again, there's the road and then the layout. So Phase 2 is over here. Phase 3 is this area in here. The plat was reviewed by staff. There's no major issues. Like I said, it pretty much is identical to Phase 2, just 29 units, a little bit further to the east. The Vineyards needs the plat for the financing for their contribution to the road. That's why we're bringing it to you now. And it just highlights the phases that are on their master phase plan there. And again, it's coming over this way on the east part of it. Close-up view of what that looks like, a little over six acres and again, 29 lots. Some of them along here where Grosseto Ranch Road is, and then interior ones here on the road that's completed for Phase 2 in here. And it'll go extend that this way as well. That's all I have on that. If you have any questions, there is a representative here too from the Vineyards to answer any questions.
Okay. All right. Any questions from council from Mr. Ellis? No? All right. Do we want to hear from the developer on this?
Yes.
Yes, you're more than welcome, sir. Good evening. Thanks for making the trip over.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Good to see you, Mr. Corbin. KJ Kasun, the Vineyards at Cottonwood.
You're welcome to present what, any notable changes with this next phase or?
No, we're excited to get moving. Obviously, the Grosseto Ranch Road has been a big stumbling block for the town. Did a little research. It's been on the books since 2001. And so it's a very much needed roadway. Obviously, that comes at a cost to any developer. We have to sell homes to do that. So moving Phase 3 along allows us to build Grosseto Ranch Road in partnership with the Fane Group and in parallel with Phase 3. So I think you're going to see the same thing from us as far as the quality of homes, the type of people that are moving into those homes and obviously an asset to this community. So I appreciate you guys' support and you guys have always been there for us. And we look forward to a continued partnership with the city of Cottonwood.
Great, great. Thank you. Any questions? Yes, go ahead.
When do you anticipate the home sales to start?
Well, obviously, very active in Phase 1 and Phase 2 now. Phase 2 is 70% sold. We anticipate starting Phase 3 in July. The ADR process requires about 60 days, so I would imagine you could purchase in Phase 3 in 60 days.
Do you anticipate any problem? Are you having slow sales, high sales, average?
You know, we all wish we had a crystal ball, but I don't. I think this community has been on the escape route from higher tax bracket states. And I don't envision that's going to change, you know? I don't think we're going to, I don't. I think on a micro level, it's going to be a little, we're going to have a little stagnation. But I don't think on a big level, from a macro viewpoint, this community is going to suffer.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? No? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. If there's nothing else, then I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the final plat for the Vineyards at Cottonwood Phase 3, subject to the stipulations approved by the city council on September 21st, 2021, for the preliminary plat.
Second.
Okay, mayor made the motion. Councilmember Holt seconded it. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
And Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Councilmember Carratt?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Narin?
Yes.
And Mayor Linsky?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, next is item eight, discussion, consideration, and possible approval to increase certain fees for the Cottonwood Recreation Center and other park facilities.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Jack Teal, your Parks and Recreation Director. I'm here tonight to discuss a project we brought back to you during the council retreat in early January. I've been trying to close that item out. When we came to the retreat, we presented to you on some rates within the recreation center and the need to increase our rates. At that time, we had presented some rates that just weren't palatable or in the realistic realm of what we want to do with it. So tonight, I wanted to bring that item back and get direction on council and hopefully approval to move forward with this new rate adjustment that we feel is much more palatable, has a smaller impact on the individual, but a much larger impact on our overall cost recovery and subsidy of the recreation center. So here at first, you'll see we start with the adult memberships. And we do this strategically because it's important that people understand that our adult membership is our baseline membership. Any membership rate off of that is a discounted rate. So when you ask me what it costs to use the recreation center, it costs the rate you see here. Any rate below that is a discounted rate. So as we look at our youth and our senior and our military, we see those as discounted rates. So to start with our adult memberships, I'm not quite sure exactly what happened on that slide there. But you can see our current rates are at $35, $35, and $95. What we're projecting is slight bumps to each one of those. And in general, you'll see that each one of our rates for those single months is going to be about $3. The further we extend those membership rates into our three-month category, you'll see that those jump because that's three times that rate. Some of them are a little bit off, I think $15, $22. And we'll go through those. But I wanted to see that tonight, give you guys an opportunity to see what our projections are going to be. So the largest jump you see here is on our adult couples. It would go from three months at $135 to three months at $200. It's an increase of $75 for that three-month span. That is still a discounted rate of if you were to purchase six individual one-month memberships. So you still get the discount over that longer run. Then as we move on into our other rate categories here, for our youth or senior rates, you'll see the same thing. It's about a $3 adjustment. They go from 25 to 28. And then over to three-month span, you can see that jump of $15 from 60 to 75. On our family rate category, you'll see similar-like items. We go from 65 to 80. That's an increase of about 15. And then our three-month span has that increase of 22 up to 200. And this is one of those quirky weird things. You look at this and you say, well, why is it the same expense for an adult couple as it is a family? And that's really where we're trying to balance these things at. We couldn't raise one or the other without being so far unfair to that other group. So this was the balancing point. If I were to raise our family memberships, we'd be going against the values we've set at the recreation center and maybe outpricing those families who are trying to encourage to use the membership. If we raise the adult, you're talking about raising it more than the $75 we've already raised, thus pricing people out of that category. So this is one of those unique things that we just kind of had to balance, and this is how we chose to do it. So if council has further direction on that, please let me know, and I'd love to hear your thoughts on it. For our family memberships, we're also looking at dialing those in a little bit more. Right now, our current membership is three to five members. There's a lot of ambiguity there. So what we're trying to do is just set a family membership at four and then have the additional add-on for those memberships. And you can see that presented here. It was an additional $18 or $40 based on what level of membership you're looking at, current rates. We'd like to increase those to $20 and $50. So a small bump, but again, stays within what we feel is a more palatable rate. When we talk about transitioning our rates to and making sure that we're putting ourselves on a business plan, a business model that works for the recreation center, one of our recommendations is to eliminate fees as well. And that would be annual rates across the board. So in every category, we're recommending the deletion of all those annual rates as well as those unique couple memberships. So a lot of the times, you'll have a senior who is maybe 56, but their spouse is 54. It's a double category there. It's not often used, but it creates a lot of backend work on staff and makes it confusing when you have to resell those memberships or explain to people the difference in those. So we feel our rate is already fair enough that we can eliminate that rate code and not really have that issue with that small group that uses it. And the same thing with the youth and adult. We just feel those are two separate. You should buy a youth pass and you should buy an adult pass. To have those is just another unique situation that makes it harder on staff's side to track those things. If we look at this and we look at the financial impact of what this is going to do, if we adopt these as presented tonight, in this fiscal year, we're currently projected to look at a 37% subsidy or a 63% cost recovery. And these numbers were projected a while ago. We may or may not get to those. But we use that number as our projections to figure this stuff out. So if we were to adopt this, these rates as projected tonight, we're expecting to generate about $178,000 of additional revenue to offset our cost for that recreation center. Our projected expenses are $1.28 million. And that's an increase of this year's where we had projected $1.135 million. The offset of our revenue versus the increase of $145,000 only leaves us with a net increase of $33,000, which is a very small impact on our cost recovery goals of that facility alone. To make the jump that we would need to make to really impact our cost recovery, we did not feel would be realistic. To make those numbers work, to have a true impact on our cost recovery, our rates would have to be much higher. So we wanted to start and understand that this is going to be a process that will tag along for a couple of years with us until we can make sure we find that right business model that works for council as well as administration to get us to where we need to go. This isn't the only thing we've tried to do to control our cost and increase our revenues at the recreation center. I spoke about those at the council retreat earlier in the year. But we've worked with Yavapai College. So one of the things people like about the Cottonwood Recreation Center is our group aerobics classes. It costs us $27 every time we put on a group exercise class. So we've tried to control those costs. And one way we're doing that is we've signed an agreement with Yavapai College, who also is looking at trying to get out of their space and use other spaces. So Yavapai College, starting in the fall semester, will start teaching classes at the recreation center. Well, half of their, half the students will be comprised of Yavapai College students. The other half will be available to Cottonwood Recreation Center members. We defer the cost of the instructor to Yavapai College in lieu of use of the space. So it's a way for us to add more to our catalog while pushing that fee off onto somebody else while still allowing our members access to that class. We've created marketing opportunities at the recreation center as well as commissary kitchen agreement uses. And then a lot of different things we've done to control our costs. So before we tried to put this on the back of our members, we really tried to think creatively and bring in all the revenue we can from other sources while dialing our costs back as much as we can while still being successful within the goals we've been asked to do. So with that, we felt it was prudent to finally bring some rates to council to try and get us to where we need to go. So on the recreation center side, that's what my request is tonight. Is there questions on that specific part, or would you guys like me to jump into the Parks and Recreation side and take questions kind of at the end?
Any questions, council, for Mr. Teal on the rates for the rec center? No? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so I'll jump into the Parks and Recreation side now.
I believe Councilmember Holt's tried to get your attention.
Moving too quick.
That's okay. Mr. Teal, I think what you're proposing is really good. But I am concerned, any rate increase right now, how it's going to affect our young adults, our young families, and our senior citizens who do not have silver sneakers or silver whatever. And the reason I say that is because right now, we're at a 9% inflation rate. It's anticipated to go up continuously for the foreseeable future. We're already in a minor recession, having lived through the '70s recession and the '80s recession and the 2008 recession. Having lived through the seventies recession and the eighties recession and the two-thousand-eight recession, this is probably one of the worst that I've seen in my lifetime as far as a recession and effect on the public. When gasoline is five dollars a gallon, diesel is at least six dollars a gallon, everything at the grocery store is one and a half to two times as expensive as it was six months ago. All businesses are increasing their costs because of the inflation and the recession. We're gonna cut out our seniors and our young adults is what I'm afraid of because they're spending their money just on getting gas, getting to work, paying the rent, the utilities, and buying groceries. I'm wondering, while I think this is great, is there any possibility that this could be delayed for a period of time until things settle down a little bit and we know exactly where we're at? I'm thinking after the first of the year, being twenty-twenty-three, and the elections, and we find out where we're at with our economy and how it's going to be affected in the future. In the interim, we can continue to provide our members the opportunities to use the recreational part as well as the physical fitness, which will help them both with their families and with their mental health. But if, even if it's a few dollars a month, I'm afraid that they're gonna back off. And I'm just, I don't want to do away with it, but I'm just wondering, can we prolong the, or extend when we actually kick this in for a period of time? And I realize it's gonna cost the city a little bit of money, but my understandings are we could probably absorb the expense without any damage done to the city's budget and at the same time, help out our citizens, overcome some of the grief and struggle that they're having right now. That's just my thought.
Mr. Mayor, if I can add before Mr. Teal answers, this is why we're here. This is at council's prerogative. But I will be very clear that we will decrease our cost recovery significantly. We are looking, this would help offset the increase of a hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars we're expected. Inflation is also hitting us. We expect a minimum wage to be close to fourteen dollars, if I remember correctly, next year. You guys already approved the contract for our janitorial services. It's one of the areas that we may have to even add a little bit more to, to get the right standard, but that is a policy decision, and we can absolutely absorb that cost. The one other concern I have before I let, give Mr. Teal a little more time to gather his thoughts is, at some point, we're gonna reach capacity at the rec center. And as a frequent member and user of that facility, it's getting pretty full in there. We're adding devices. We're adding a couple other pieces of equipment over the next couple of weeks. We'll add some more devices over the next year to add more things for people to do. But we're beginning to reach a comfort level in there of using the facility. Now, for-profit would add as many, would let it go. So we're trying to raise the rates to increase revenue without sending a lot of people, getting them to cancel, and it's a balancing rate to do this. But a long answer for your question is, we'll do as council directs us. I just, with direction previously to increase cost recovery, we've done things to, other ways to increase revenue, as Mr. Teal's talked about, and we've done things to decrease costs. And I'm out of other great ideas at this point. This would just be another way to help a little bit with the cost recovery. But it's up to council to make that decision, but we can do as directed. Yes, we have eight million dollars about in undesignated reserves in your account next year, so that's not the issue. The issue is philosophically is policy at council. How much does the general fund want to subsidize the rec center? And that's really your decision.
And Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Holes, thank you, Ron. Lots of really good points in there. So, and this is a number Ron hasn't heard today either, so he may slap my hands and pull me back. But I was reviewing our monthly report today, and if you look at our expenditures versus our expenses last year, it's exactly nine percent that we're talking about inflation. So when I show the sixty-three percent number, if you account for inflation, we'd hit that sixty-three percent number. Right now, looking at it, I can't sit here and tell you, I think we're gonna hit sixty-three percent accounting for inflation. It's about nine percent off on our expenses versus this exact time last year. We just looked at those numbers this morning. I can say that year-to-date, we've made about seventy thousand dollars off of those silver sneakers and Optimum and all of our insurance provider claims. Although we have about half of our senior members who use that, we get paid per scan, not on a monthly rate for them. So if you use the facility one time, we get four dollars for that. We want you to use the facility eight times. That's the maximum we get paid out on. So we get that thirty-two dollars if you use that facility eight times, but we only get paid per scan on those memberships. It is tight. Inflation is a real thing. And to Ron's point, I'm here to get direction. This is not Jack Teal's recreation center. This is the Cottonwood Recreation Center. So I and my staff will do whatever council directs us to do. It's my job to make sure you have the information to make that decision.
Well, council, do you want to let Mr. Teal continue the rest of his presentation? Then we'll take maybe a more holistic stab at what we want to do with rates. Okay.
Got it. So then moving on, Mr. Mayor, here to the additional recommendations. I guess this next one is recreation center-related, too. Currently, we have specialty groups, group rates. These are typically when your schools want to come in and do field trips or Spectrum has used the facility before. Yes, the ARC uses the facility in group rates. Those are set at two dollars for youth, three dollars for adults currently. We'd recommend moving that up to three dollars for youth, five dollars for adult. Currently, as it sits at three dollars, adults are paying less than half of what their day pass membership's rates are. So one way we think that we can help and not put so much of a burden back on the user groups is to slightly adjust that. That will help us and not put such a burden on those individuals who are using those for those group rates. Another thing at the recreation center is our room rentals. So council, in two thousand nineteen, was brought a similar request like this. And at that point in time, it was recommended from staff to make all of our room rentals seventy-five dollars. And though I agree with the premise of having all rooms equal, what it did is at the recreation center, you could purchase one room or you could purchase three rooms, same cost of seventy-five dollars. So if you wanted the cottonwood room, seventy-five dollars. If you wanted the cottonwood room, the verdy room, and the Mingus room, that's still seventy-five dollars. So we miss out on that additional revenue on those rentals. So I would like to just clear that up if council desires and make that seventy-five dollars per room. Another thing here is on the Parks and Recreation side, we have lots of people requesting to use our water spigots at the parks for slipping slides or little kiddie pools or things like that as well as softball field or unto lights. The only rates we can find the council have ever set is ten dollars. And the only water bib rate I can find is specific to Riverfront Park. So what we'd like to do is say, okay, let's take this and let's make it blanket for all of our water bibs within the city, twenty dollars per water bib for your event. And then softball field lights, again, those are set at ten dollars. We'd like to set that at twenty dollars per field per hour. And then the pass-through rates, this is where I spoke about at the council retreat, where we don't have authority at the staff level to charge different rates. So as we continue to get softball tournaments, our capacity for trash is a good example of this. We only have X amount of cans out there. If a softball tournament comes and takes all of our fields, those trash cans are full within hours of the event, and that leaves us to figure out that trash solution. So what we'd like to do is ask council to approve pass-through rates for us. So every softball tournament that comes in that exceeds X amount of people, I think right now we're working with a hundred, that's ten teams. I reasonably think our current trash solution there could handle ten teams for a single day. Any two-night tournaments or any tournaments exceeding a hundred people, we would require two additional trash cans per field of use. That would be a cost we would pass directly on to the user. So even though the city would have to incur that cost, we would take that and pass it directly to the user. So with that, we would take the invoice from whoever our trash service provider is. We would pay that through the city, but we would then send that same invoice as an itemized deduction to the user group and say, here's the fee for the trash that you paid directly to the city. We're just acting as that pass-through. We won't ever collect a dollar more or a dollar less than what that fee, that service charge is to the city. And that would help us out a lot specifically. The clubhouse is a great example of this. I'd like to say I love when quinceañeras are there. I love the idea of when quinceañeras are there, but they are large user groups who tend to leave the place a little bit worse for wear. So a lot of the things that we've found is that our typical cleaning of that building doesn't suffice for those. The cleaning company always has extra duties, and they pass that charge on to us. We don't have administrative authority to say, hey, this should be a cost of the user group. So without deducting that from their deposit, we don't have authority to say, hey, if you'd like an additional cleaning that doesn't fall back on you and isn't taken out of your deposit, here's what that would be. I can't just create that fee. So I'm asking council, again, to approve those pass-through rates. We don't know what they are yet on all of them, but this would give us an opportunity to make sure that the city isn't held liable for those costs. And we would be as open and transparent. We would pass along that exact cost to the user group with the fees directly from the service provider that sends them to us. And with that, those are all of my requests for you tonight, and I'd be open to any questions or any concerns, comments that you guys may have.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Teal on any?
The second part makes perfect sense. I mean, that's just logical in my mind. And the first portion regarding the rec center is, you know, I feel your pain. I'm in both of those groups, just so you know. And, you know, we're a business of sorts. So although we do have a lot of money, my suggestion or my thought would be, let's try this. And if it does cut back significantly, then we can address it again. And that's the only thing I could think of maybe we could do.
So to put it a little bit of perspective, if you're talking about the rate of inflation, years ago, they took out gasoline and food. So when you hear about this rate of inflation, it doesn't include gas and food. I don't know about you, but my biggest expenses are gas and food. So I think it's a pretty reasonable rate that you're putting out there. It's not, it's much less than what the real rate of inflation is. So I think it's doable.
Any other thoughts?
I had a few thoughts. And Councilmember Holes, your comments were very well received. I think it's important for purposes of tonight as well for any public to know that a good deal of council time was spent discussing alternatives to rate increases. I know we've mentioned multiple times at the, you know, our strategic retreat, but I hope that the public understands the exhaustive efforts by Mr. Teal and his team to explore cost reductions as far as every, pretty much every aspect of operations and equipment at the rec center, as well as exploring just really innovative collaborative ideas such as the kitchen and the collaboration with Yavapai College. I am generally very hesitant to speak in favor of a rate increase. And again, Councilmember Holes, your points are well taken. I also see that these proposed increases with the rates aren't even in line with the costs to the city and what we're looking at as far as our own cost of delivery of the rec center services, especially with the staffing perspective. And I think that's an important piece as far as, you know, in my decision-making. I agree with Councilmember Wildin. The additional recommendations make sense. I just hope that they're, that we are reasonable when we are passing on those costs. I know just, you know, there at times can be some back and forth of, I left it clean, I didn't, especially with cleaning fees and room rentals. And so I just hope that we would take a reasonable approach. But I also agree that we should not be, we should be passing those costs on. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Henry, these would be opt-in fees. If ever a building is left not up to the standard, we would take that from the deposit, specifically if there's damages that are done that the city incurs. These would be fees that they would be able to opt into. If somebody would like to take care of their own trash at the softball tournament, we'll sign off on it. You just have to be responsible for making sure that that trash is gone, whether you pack that in your car, your truck, wherever it goes. If you'd like to handle that burden, I'm all for it. So they would opt into these fees, so they would know fully upfront what they're opting into.
Okay, good. Any other thoughts? No. Okay. Regarding the fees, you know, I've been sat here when we've had to increase fees, you know, during times of recession, it's really, really challenging. But at the end of the day, I do feel like, you know, as a council, we discussed not wanting the general fund to subsidize this as much as possible. I think we've taken great efforts to reduce that subsidy. It's still, I think, extremely reasonable and affordable for our families, our seniors, and our youth in our community. I know that we will always be subsidizing this recreation center. I have no, I'm not, you know, walking in blind here, but I think it's one of those facilities that really does draw people to our community and draws our community together. And it's health-focused. It's all those things. So I think, you know, I'm comfortable subsidizing it, but at the end of the day, I think we do need to, from time to time, look at rate increases to make sure that it's not, you know, being too much of a burden on our community. I had some questions about the commissary kitchen and wanted to know how that's going, and if you could just flesh that out a little bit more for me.
Yeah, so the commissary kitchen, it's actually been going really well. So we've had one tenant who is about to renew their lease for the second year. They go out to Seattle and then they come back in September when their lease is up and they plan to renew it. So on my desk, I've got two additional commissary agreements that are ready to go. And we've had between now and then quite a few other commissaries who want to come up. Our hang-up right now is that we don't have a disposal site for their reclaimed water, their gray water that they produce during their food trucks. So I, my current, I've been working with the county on this already to figure out what we can do. So now I just got to figure out where we can tie in to our sewer system with the building to create that dump disposal site for them. The recreation center has up to five spaces that we can handle without providing additional power for commissary kitchens. Right now, I've got one person who's ready to move in. I just got to get that agreement over to Mr. Corbin, get him to sign it, and see whatever equipment they plan to bring into the building. Because we don't provide the equipment. We provide the space. They have to provide their own equipment. And the other one just has to follow up with us on when they'd like to start, if they'd still like to move forward with it. But it's going really well. The premise is, we give you X amount of space, and I'll use Funky Pita as a good example of this because they've been a long-term tenant now. They rented an eight-foot linear length by, it's eight by five is really what it comes out to. They store their freezer, they store their fridge, they have access to all their own stuff. We schedule times for them to come in and do their food prep. They take care of all their food prep. It's no cooking. It's cold food only because we don't have a hood. They clean up after themselves. It's their kitchen when they're using it. They put all their stuff away. They go about their business. When we get competing uses, we schedule them all out, and we get three hundred dollars a month for that fee there. So it's little work on us. It's all emphasis on that person. We provide that space and that avenue for them to be able to do it.
That's great. That's great. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, can I add one thing? We didn't mention, went and said, is we did not increase any day use fees. So it's still five and eight, is that correct? So those, and for our young folks, the day pass is the main way they use the facility. So we have asked those to stay exactly the same for that reason.
Okay. All right. Anything else from council? I know you're laser-focused on the enrollment, too, at the rec center, so I know you'll be keeping an eye on that.
Absolutely.
All right. We need to give Mr. Teal some direction here. Go ahead.
I move to approve the recommended rate schedule for the Cottonwood Recreation Center and other park facilities with an effective date of August one, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Hey, Councilmember Wildin made the motion. Councilmember Matthews seconded it. Can we please have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Holes?
No.
Councilmember Carratt?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Narin?
Yes.
And Mayor Olinsky?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Thank you, sir. All right, last up is ordinance number seven-one-four, meaning Title II, Chapter two-point-oh-eight-point-one-two-zero, Meetings, Order of Business F, Call to the Public of the Cottonwood Municipal Code, and this is first reading.
Mr. Mayor and Council, as we've discussed before, and I think, Mr. Mayor, as you've previewed a couple of times at meetings for the public, this ordinance would update the code section that talks about call to the public on your regular meeting agendas. And it will conform the code to the practice, the longstanding practice at this point, of giving members of the public three minutes to speak. And it will also reinforce the notion that's in statute that call to the public is reserved as a forum for local folks to come in and talk to you about local matters.
Okay. In plain English.
Believe it or not, I try.
A- any discussion? I think this aligns with what we all, uh, came to consensus with. Okay.
Mayor, if I may, just a question, a request for clarification. I, the ordinance looks good, uh, or the proposed revised language, um, looks good. But the, I'm unclear as to the procedure, because the proposal says at the conclusion, so one of the mechanisms for council to respond to criticism is, um, is outlined here, and it says at the conclusion of the call to the public. So would that be after all yellow slips are read, or is it af- directly after the person who has criticized that, that council member?
Uh, council member Henry, I, I've struggled with that for a long time, because that language is embedded in the statute. And, um, w- one of the things that's difficult to do from my chair is, is to interrupt the council member if there's something going on and, and there's, uh, a response seems in order, given the tempo of the discussion. Um, i- it's not for me to step in and, and interject into that conversation and say, oh, this is supposed to be at the end of the call to the public. But that's how the statute reads, um, and if council can wait till the end of the call to the public, that's better. Um, if it doesn't, I, I don't anticipate great litigation over it.
No, but I appreciate that clarification moving forward if this is adopted on the actual procedure we're adopting, so I, thank you for that.
My, my preference as chair would be that we wait until the end of, all the yellow slips have been read, everyone's had their opportunity, the jets have cooled off, and then we have an opportunity to respond if, if necessary to criticism, only because, uh, it provides an opportunity for, uh, back and forth with the person at the podium, and I'd, I'd rather prevent the uncomfortable situation of having to shut that individual down to have a seat so that we can respond to criticism. But, you know, that, in the heat of the moment, it may not, it may not work out, uh, but...
And I suspect in its wisdom, that's why the legislature wrote the statute that way.
Okay.
Well, yeah, and thank you for your work on this. I think this very, uh, very well and very delicately deals with what we were looking to do, so.
Yeah, and I mean, the burden will, will fall on me to try to work with the folks that are here, and, yeah, just really appreciate council support on that, and, um, it, it won't be easy for some, but I think we'll, I think we'll get there and hopefully we'll get back to kind of business as usual and not, um, eating up a lot of time when we have applicants here to discuss more important things. Um, and we'll just get, you know, get the meetings moving along as we did this evening.
Are we going to continue to say that we only wanna hear from issues regarding the city?
Yep.
And other things that we have no control over?
Yeah, it'll be an educational process for some time, I imagine. I'll, I'll probably just continue to, to remind folks that that's the new, the new protocol. Yep. Okay, well, this is just the first reading, so if there's no other discussion, let's have our deputy clerk please read ordinance number seven-one-four by title only.
Ordinance number seven-one-four, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending Title II, Chapter two point oh eight point one-two-oh, meetings, order of business of the city's municipal code.
Okay, thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, um, we didn't read resolution number thirty-one thirty-nine by title.